Okay. Good evening everybody and welcome to the August twelfth meeting of the Town Board of the town of Newcastle. The board has been an executive session and now I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we're gonna start off our work session with uh the topic of the town's liability insurance renewal. Rob, do you want to um get us started?
I will. So uh this is a an annual tradition about this time of year. Our coverage ends on the thirtieth?
Thirty first.
Thirty first of August. Uh so we're we're left in this situation every year. Uh the current insurer Munich uh the prior quote or the prior coverage um for the twenty four twenty five year was one point two zero six million. Um we had a renewal offer from them. They give us a a kind of a tentative look at what's coming. We heard about this a couple months ago. Their renewal came in at one point six six nine uh over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than our prior quote. Um so RJ got to work. Uh the board's familiar with the fact that the town has had difficulty getting multiple insurers to quote um in the past. How many quoted this year total? Or were declined to quote? You reached out to?
So declined? Nine.
Yeah, so we had nine decline.
Is that typical or? Well, is that typical? That seems high.
It is high. Um it's based on the first thing looked at was the claims information. I don't know if you want me to come up or talk?
I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
No.
What would you like to come up, RJ?
Sure, very good.
Thank you. Okay, sure. Not that tall. Um to answer your question, uh when we do market it, we go to every insurance company even if ones we think may not quote it because we can be surprised. So that's pretty much the marketplace. To answer question nine is high. Um typically if we have an account that has very little claims municipality, we'll go to three and four and we'll know we'll get three of our quotes.
And I think we have the the upper Minkel Dam situation too that also scares off a lot of insurers. And so when we got this high renewal, which you know we talked about last year at this time, the prior renewal is forty percent over the year before. This is around forty percent uh over last year. So you know I think RJ mentioned the time they're looking to make their money back on us because they spent over the last couple years. So uh RJ went out there and beat the bushes and got a really good quote. Uh first he reached out to Travelers who has declined to quote for several years and we got them to look at it. But they were going to I think reduce the umbrella coverage that we had and they it wasn't gonna be an apples to apples quote. They were gonna kind of remove some of the coverages. So uh what RJ did find was Houston Houston Casualty Company that came in uh one million one hundred fifty nine thousand three hundred and five dollars. Um this provides the same umbrella coverage of ten million dollars. Uh I mentioned to the board in the executive session, the the one change to this policy is a change in deductible from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand for non automobile claims. So we've taken a look at the history over the last few years and we don't really have many claims that fall into that window, the twenty five to fifty that this you know would affect. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the um proposal, each of the insurance companies that did were interested. We're gonna quote fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollar deductible. So the fifty thousand dollar deductible that the travelers quote uh that travelers was gonna quote and also the current insurance company was gonna quote fifty thousand, did quote fifty thousand deductible. And also this company that we uh got a great quote from, uh Houston Casualty quoted fifty thousand dollar deductible. The deductibles over term, the time for the municipalities, the town size um have been going up. That's just what the industry has been seeing.
Okay. So um that's that is the information that we have. So we're asking the board to approve that tonight uh to uh renew with Houston Casualty Company.
So um considering that we had nine of them decline, I I think that we're now saving almost fifty thousand dollars from last year.
Yeah.
And we're saving five hundred thousand dollars from the proposal for this year.
And and.
So so this is really truly significant.
Yeah, and I'll point out another thing too that's not part of this quote because uh we're not paying it this year. So uh depending on the insurer that we're with and how FOA gets compensated, uh sometimes we pay FOA fee for their services. That's included in this quote. So that's forty nine thousand that we paid last year that we're not paying. So you're probably about a hundred thousand dollars savings.
Are we gonna ask now about the tail insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, um Mike, Mike was uh gonna unless you wanna you wanna we can we can follow through.
I'm sorry. No, 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 go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what what the original policy that's in existence now? Is it a claims made policy?
Well, it's a package policy that has different coverages. So it's about eight, nine coverages, property, general liability, automobile.
Okay.
Of those coverages, two of them are claims made, which is public officials and employment practices.
Okay, and we're we're replacing the whole package?
Correct, yes. All the coverages.
Public officials and what was the other one?
Employment practices. Interns if a town employee sues the town for discrimination.
Okay.
Employment practices. Interns if a town employee sues the town for discrimination.
Alright, so what we were thinking about is some some form of tail coverage for the claims made policies uh and how that would work.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to buy tail coverage and here's why is the current policy um has claims made coverage for both the uh public officials, employment practices. It's the same on this Houston casualty quote. The current policy for those two coverages has a retroactive date. I'll describe that in a second, of nineteen eighty nine.
Okay.
That's the current policy. The new policy will have the same nineteen eighty nine date. And what that means is they will cover the current insurance company and the new insurance company will cover any claim that is made to the town that you don't know about yet as long as the incident happened after nineteen eighty nine. They'll cover it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, and that would be the same, there would be no benefit, uh no earlier date from uh.
Nineteen eighty nine?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying even 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 under the new policy that the 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 coverage date is the same uh.
Correct, the nineteen eighty nine retroactive date is the same on the current policy as the new one. All the other coverages the town has in a package policy, all the currents, like property insurance, it's when the occurrence happened.
That's that's the that's okay, okay.
Automobile, general liability, things like that.
And those retroactive dates apply to both policies or it's?
Both coverages, yes.
Both coverages that have better claims made?
Correct.
Okay, alright, good question.
It's the same as this we have now.
That's that's good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any do you wanna follow through?
One other question, does that mean what about like a slip and fall policy like?
Occurrence. It's when the occurrence happened.
I get that, but you're talking about against employees, pardon me, against that what you're sharing does not involve a slip and fall. So if someone slipped and fell for two years ago.
Right, that's 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 not a claims made uh that's.
That's an occurrence.
That's an occurrence policy, so we'd be covered.
Yeah, so to give you an example, if the new policy goes into effect and someone comes out of the blue and says, oh, I tripped, uh not employee, I tripped and fell in January of last year, last year's policy is covering it. Because the occurrence happened, slip and fall on their watch.
Got you, okay, okay. Understood, thank you. Okay.
Okay. RJ, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it as usual, saved us a lot of money and you found us a great policy.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you, RJ.
Thank you.
Alright.
I guess I could add one thing. The um all this couldn't been done without Rob's help and Rob's team help. The new insurance company asked a ton of questions, wanted pictures. It had to be done in a short out short time. There was lengthy applications. Rob got a lot of it done. The ones he um he some of it, he got to department managers, got back very quickly. So he made and his staff made our job really easy. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Rob, as usual.
And RJ climbed uh over the dam. I think he brought his uh tree saw out to Millwood Park.
I did.
Did you?
Oh yeah.
I mean, no exaggeration.
Wait, are you serious?
No, that's.
No.
You did bring the saw out to Millwood Park?
You went to the dam?
No, I didn't bring, I didn't uh oh, it was a um it was a long, it's not a chainsaw, it was a long, yes.
No, no, this gets better by the time.
Like a saw like one like Rob was on the side, you're on one side like old swing.
It was right, me and I, we were getting we were together.
You know, I thought the insurance liability people are gonna be bored listening to this one. I don't think so.
Yeah, no, it's I we got I have stories. Thank you.
Wow, okay. Thank you for going over and beyond, Rob. Thank you as usual and the staff to for always, you know, we do going over and beyond. Um okay, so Rob, would you like to go over um the administrative items for today?
Sure, we have a whole host of administrative items today. Uh we have three different retro retroactive payment of claims, uh July eighteenth, July twenty fifth and August first. Uh we have the adoption of monthly reports and minutes from July of two thousand twenty five. We have the authorization to extend the DPW uh twenty twenty one municipal solid waste and recycling services with Sanipro. Uh two thousand twenty six will be our final year under this contract, so we will have to renegotiate that next year. Uh we have the authorization to hire an appraiser for a tax sorcery on Grace Lane. Uh the cost of that appraisal is six thousand dollars. Uh if that ends up going to trial and they need a trial ready appraisal, an additional three thousand dollars would be the cost. Uh we have the authorization to attend the fall conference for uh Josh for our assessor. Uh that's fully covered, that's reimbursed by the state for his attendance there. Uh we have an authorization to purchase the variable frequency drive for pump number five at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The amount is forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh in this instance, we uh were invoking an emergency clause here uh so that we can go and replace this right away. This is the only large flow pump that we have at the treatment plant and uh that would be difficult for us if this fails. So we don't have the time to go out to a full bid process. So Bart did get a couple different quotes and this was the best of them.
Okay.
Uh we have the authorization to utilize services from the OGS mini bid process uh to purchase a uh EV Chevy Blaze
In the past, how many quoted this year total? Or were declined to quote, you reached out to.
So declined? Nine.
Yeah, so we had nine decline.
Is that typical or?
Is that typical or? Well, is that typical? That seems high.
It is high. Um, it's based in the first thing looked at was the claims information. I don't know if you want me to come up or talk about it.
I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
No.
What would you like to come up, RJ?
Sure, very good.
Thank you. Okay, sure.
Not that tall. Um, to answer your question, uh when we do market it, we go to every insurance company, even if ones we think may not quote it because we can be surprised. So that's pretty much the marketplace. To answer question nine is high. Um typically if we have an account that has very little claims municipality, we'll go to three and four and we'll know we'll get three of our quotes.
And I think we have the the upper Minkel Dam situation too that also scares off a lot of insurers.
Right.
Uh so when we got this high renewal, which you know we talked about last year at this time. The prior renewals forty percent over the year before, this is around forties percent uh over last year. So you know, I think RJ mentioned the time they're looking to make their money back on us because they spent over the last couple of years. So uh RJ went out there and beat the bushes and got a really good quote. Uh first he reached out to travelers who has declined to quote for several years and we got them to look at it. But they were going to, I think, reduce the umbrella coverage that we had and they it wasn't gonna be an apples to apples quote. They were gonna kind of remove some of the coverages. So uh what RJ did find was Houston Houston Casualty Company that came in uh one million one hundred fifty nine thousand three hundred and five dollars. Um this provides the same umbrella coverage of ten million dollars. Uh I mentioned to the board and executive session, the the one change to this policy is a change in deductible from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand for non automobile claims. So we've taken a look at the history over the last few years and we don't really have many claims that fall into that window, the twenty five to fifty that this you know would affect. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the proposal, each of the insurance companies that did were interested. We're gonna quote fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollar deductible. So the fifty thousand dollar deductible that the travelers quote uh that travelers was gonna quote and also the current insurance company was gonna quote fifty thousand, did quote fifty thousand deductible. And also this company that we uh got a great quote from, uh Houston Casualty quoted fifty thousand dollar deductible. The deductibles over term, the time for the municipalities, the town size um have been going up. That's just with the industry has been seeing.
Okay. So um that's that is the information that we have. So we're asking the board to approve that tonight uh to uh renew with Houston Casualty Company.
So um considering that we had nine of them decline, I I think that we're now saving almost fifty thousand dollars from last year.
Yeah.
And we're saving five hundred thousand dollars from the proposal for this year.
And and.
So so this is really truly significant.
Yeah, and I'll point out another thing too that's not part of this quote because uh we're not paying it this year. So uh depending on the insurer that we're with and how FOA gets compensated, uh sometimes we pay FOA fee for their services. That's included in this quote. So that's forty nine thousand that we paid last year that we're not paying. So you're probably about a hundred thousand dollars savings.
Are we are we gonna ask now about the tail insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, um Mike Mike was uh gonna unless you wanna you wanna we can we can follow through.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. No, 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 go ahead.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so what what the original policy that's in existence now? Is it a claims made policy?
Well, it's a package policy that has different coverages. So it's about eight, nine coverages, property, general liability, automobile.
Okay. Okay.
Of those coverages, two of them are claims made, which is public officials and employment practices.
What? Okay, and we're we're replacing the whole package?
So. Correct, yes. All the coverages.
Public officials and what was the other one?
Employment practices, interns if a town employee sues the town for discrimination.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Alright, so what we were thinking about is some some form of tail coverage for the claims made policies uh and how that would work.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure we need to buy tail coverage and here's why is the current policy um has claims made coverage for both the uh public officials, employment practices. It's the same on this Houston casualty quote. The current policy for those two coverages has a retroactive date, I'll describe that in a second, of nineteen eighty nine.
Okay.
That's the current policy. The new policy will have the same nineteen eighty nine date. And what that means is they will cover the current insurance company and the new insurance company will cover any claim that is made to the town that you don't know about yet, as long as the incident happened after nineteen eighty nine.
Okay.
They'll cover it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, and that would be the same, there would be no benefit uh no earlier date from uh.
Okay.
Nineteen eighty nine?
Yeah, no, I I'm just saying even 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 under the new policy that the 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 coverage date is the same uh.
Correct, the nineteen eighty nine retroactive date is the same on the current policy as the new one. All the other coverages the town has in a package policy, all the currents, like property insurance, it's when the occurrence happened.
That's 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 okay, okay.
Automobiles, general liability, things like that.
That's. And those retroactive dates apply to both policies or it's a?
Both coverages, yes.
Both coverages that have that are claims made?
Correct.
Okay, alright, good question.
Correct, it's same as this we have now.
That's that's good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any do you wanna follow through?
Well, it's one of the question, does that mean what about like a slip and fall policy like?
Occurrence, it's when the occurrence happened.
I get that, but you're talking about against employees, pardon me, against that what you're sharing does not involve a slip and fall. So if someone slipped and fell for two years ago.
Right, that's 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 not a claims made uh that's not.
That's an occurrence.
That's an occurrence policy, so we'd be covered.
Yeah. Yeah, so to give you an example, if the new policy goes into effect and someone comes out of the blue and says, oh, I tripped uh I'm not employee. I tripped and fell in January of last year, last year's policy is covering it. Because the occurrence happened, slip and fall on their watch.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay, okay, understand, thank you. Okay.
Okay. RJ, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it as usual, saved us a lot of money and you found us a great policy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you, RJ.
Thank you.
Alright.
I if I could add one thing, the um all this couldn't been done without Rob's help and Rob's team help.
Thanks.
The new insurance company asked a ton of questions, wanted pictures. It had to be done in a short out short time. There was lengthy applications, Rob got a lot of it done. The ones he um he some of it, he got to department managers, got back very quickly. So he made and his staff made our job really easy, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Rob, as usual.
And uh RJ climbed uh over the dam. I think he brought his uh tree saw out to Millwood Park.
I did.
Did you?
Oh yeah.
I mean, no exaggeration.
Wait, are you serious?
No, that's.
No.
You did bring the saw out to Millwood Park.
You went to the dam?
No, I didn't bring, I didn't uh oh, it was a um it was a long, it's not a chainsaw, it was a long, yes.
No, no, this gets better by the time.
But like a saw like one like Rob was on the side, you're on one side like old swing.
It was right, me and I, we were getting we were together.
You know, I thought the insurance liability people are gonna be bored listening to this one. I don't think so.
Yeah, no, it's I we got I have stories. Thank you.
Wow, okay. Thank you for going over and beyond, Rob. Thank you as usual and the staff too for always, you know, we do.
Thank you.
Going over and beyond. Um okay, so Rob, would you like to go over um the administrative items for today?
Sure, we have a whole host of administrative items today. Uh we have three different retro retroactive payment of claims, uh July eighteenth, July twenty fifth and August first. Uh we have the adoption of monthly reports and minutes from July of two thousand twenty five. We have the authorization to extend the DPW uh twenty twenty one municipal solid waste and recycling services with SanitPro. Uh two thousand twenty six will be our final year under this contract, so we will have to renegotiate that next year. Uh we have the authorization to hire an appraiser for a tax sorcery on Grace Lane. Uh the cost of that appraisal is six thousand dollars. Uh if that ends up going to trial and they need a trial ready appraisal, an additional three thousand dollars would be the cost. Uh we have the authorization to attend the fall conference for uh Josh for our assessor. Uh that's fully covered, that's reimbursed by the state for his attendance there. Uh we have an authorization to purchase the variable frequency drive for pump number five at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. The amount is forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh in this instance, we uh were invoking an emergency clause here uh so that we can go and replace this right away. This is the only large flow pump that we have at the treatment plant and uh that would be difficult for us if this fails, so we don't have the time to go out to a full bid process. So Bart did get a couple different quotes and this was the best of them.
Okay.
Uh we have the authorization to utilize services from the OGS mini bid process uh to purchase a uh EV Chevy Blazer. Uh the amount of forty thousand and eighty seven dollars, that will be used by the development department. Uh their fleet of vehicles is aging and uh we needed to add one uh a current vehicle to that fleet. So we're adding a uh EV Blazer. Uh we have the authorization to share the services of Omnia Partners bids for the purchase of the VRV five T system for the art center. That's a heat pump to do the heating and cooling at the art center.
Oh, that's great. Will that cover the entire art center?
Yes.
Or will will there be traditional heat in addition to that?
I there's typically a backup available, but this will be this will provide the majority, yeah. Fifty nine thousand five hundred is the total.
This will cover it, okay.
Um we are looking for authorization to reject all the bids and to rebid the DPW purchase of masonry repair for the parks and recycling garage. Uh when the bids came in, it was clear that not all of the bidders uh understood the project. They were not comparing apples to apples. So we felt like it was better to just reject all bids and to go out and rebid this project. Uh we have the authorization to approve change order number one for the chap pack parking lot and drainage improvement project. This is for the pathway uh I think that's around the outer edge of the building that was designed. We had some issues with this and we ended up the uh original engineer that performed the work on the uh handicap parking lot. They were uh substandard in uh preparing the plans for this. So Miguel actually did the plans in house for this and the survey worked for two thousand two hundred seventy five dollars is to uh set the um the project for the construction for it. We have authorization to approve change order number one for the chap pack solar installation project, twenty one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So we're adding critter guards and snow guards to the roof at the chap.
Cryter guards, okay.
Critter guards. So one of the things, the snow guards, they realized that uh the way the panels were sitting, that if snow built up, it could actually fall on somebody and ice and snow could fall on somebody around the building. So uh twenty one thousand and I think the project that's still covered by the NYSERDA funds for that project. Uh.
What what's the um completion estimated?
Not till the middle of September now. So the um apparently they're doing a good job, the installation, but they haven't been there five days a week and in fact Walter's out there every day checking on them. They've been sporadic the last couple of weeks. The first two weeks they were out there every day. Um.
And that's unexpected, right? They're supposed to be out there every day.
We believed that they were gonna be out there every day, yes.
Has anyone spoken to them to find out?
We have. They say their guys are committed and they've got other projects and yeah.
That won't interfere with the use of chap pack, will it?
So. No, so that's the one thing that Walter, we've been checking the schedule when they're there and and making sure um that they have been avoiding any of the events that are going on there. So, yeah.
Okay, good.
Uh let's see, we have authorization for change order number one and number two to shed the road. Uh eighty three thousand seven hundred and ninety nine hundred. These were some changes that occurred in the field. Uh I think that number still falls within our contingency for that project. Um that project's completed, we're looking to close it out now and these are change orders that were required to do that. Uh we have an authorization to attend conference for the police, officers Mirabello and Miller. Uh this is a juvenile uh handling juveniles and SRO training. Uh we have an authorization to attend the conference for the court clerks. Uh both of them will be going. Uh Diana's our senior court clerk. Uh Andrea's uh been with us about a year. We felt it was important to send both of them to the court. So the court will close for two days, I believe in September. This is with the judge's approval and uh his recommendation. The total amount is twenty two hundred and seventy eight dollars for that. Uh we have the authorization to approve the banner request for the historical society. That's their holiday train show. We have the authorization to approve mutual aid and rapis rapid response IMA with the police. That just dictates uh how the local municipalities handle the mutual aid with each other. Uh we have the authorization to approve the contract renewal for logically, that's our IT vendor. We have an authorization to solicit bids for the twenty five and twenty six after school transportation services for parks and recreation. Uh we are have the authorization to set a public hearing on the extension of the moratorium on the uh battery energy storage system and commercial solar. Uh we plan to set that for September ninth. We have uh a resolution in support of the uh WIIA and IMG grant application. That is for the trenchless water main that goes underneath the MTA and uh the uh Songill River Parkway. And uh Mike, I had authorization to approve the advance payment on Joan Corwin Way. Did you have uh a resolution or wording that you were gonna give to um Lauren?
Yes.
I know we we talked with Lino about that last week.
I did, yes, I did. I have the um, let me find the um the wording.
Okay, so we're gonna make that payment, which was the offer, I believe, of one point two zero five million. That's for the Joan Corwin Way property that we've negotiated. So uh as part of the eminent domain proceeding, the property owner has accepted um the eminent domain, but they're disputing the total uh cost or the value of the property. So the way that works, as Lino's explained to us, is that we need to make that payment, the one point two zero five, which is what we value the property at. We need to pay that now and the ultimate value that will be disputed down the road. But they've acknowledged the eminent domain and you know once we make that payment, Mike, the the process starts, we'll we'll be able to take possession of that property, correct?
Right, correct, yeah. So yeah, we'd be able to file the file the map and um and we would own it at that point and then uh the rest would just be the negotiation price. So I mean, so the way we need to structure that resolution is the board is authorizing the uh the administrator to to contract with the um with the uh the 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 landowner um uh you know, for the acquisition uh at a at a price not to at a cost not to exceed. And that was the part that I don't know if we finalized, uh Rob, the 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 uh the the maximum.
Okay, so we would have to confirm that with Lino, but I believe the offer we have been working with and this is this has been consistent over the last couple of years was one million two hundred and five thousand, but I will confirm that exact amount with Lino.
Okay. Okay, and that that authorization would have to be would be subject to an agreement um acceptable to uh to town council. Um yeah, and that's it, that's that's the whole resolution.
And once the check is handed over or the agreement is signed, how long until we take possession?
Do you know that, Mike?
I'm sorry, what's?
How how long until we can take possession of the property once we hand over the check?
Um oh what once we hand over the check, it's really the thing that triggers uh possession is the recording of the uh of the acquisition map. Which can happen, you know, which can happen while that that's all uh pending actually. While while you know, while while the the contract is being uh is being finalized.
Okay, so.
So Lino, your firm files that, Lino or?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're authorizing the advance payment?
Yes.
Pending the con you know, pending approval of the contract or drawing up of the contract.
Yeah, subject to an agreement acceptable to town council.
Okay, um I'm just trying to get a sense of exactly where we are. Are we are we close to an agreement?
We are, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then.
You don't anticipate any more negotiating? I mean, I I don't wanna get into it, but.
No, 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 this is so they've accepted, right, so they have accepted this. What's that?
But they're protesting the dollar now. But they're protesting the dollar amount.
They are, so there there were three outcomes that could have happened. They could have rejected it outright and we would have just proceeded with eminent domain. They could uh ac- accept our offer. Or they could accept the eminent domain was going through, but protest the valuation and that's what they've done.
So I guess what I'm getting at is can we take possession of the property and start operating on it
Yes.
while we're still negotiating the value?
Oh yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that that was part of.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Well, that's the third option and.
Right, they they they've consented to the eminent domain, the taking, uh and then we can, yeah, then.
Yes. Right. So they're gonna vacate the property there, yeah, that's.
Right, and then while while the finalization of the 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 uh the payment is is pending. Yeah, no, the at that the acquisition map will be hi- it will be filed. You know, uh notwithstanding the fact that those are annual.
Okay, and is the dollar amount the only part of that agreement that's left to be determined?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause it's really not, it's not our playing.
Alright.
Yeah, and and so we're comfortable, uh we've had this process has gone on several years. We've had, I think, four different appraisals now. So we're comfortable with the valuation that we've given there. It's been consistent over the last couple of appraisals that we've had. So uh.
So do you think that our DPW equipment, all that precious, very expensive equipment could be housed by this um next winter?
So I I doubt that because there there needs to be some improvements to the building. Uh they do need to pour concrete floor in there, so um I can't say how quickly that will happen, but I know Bart's excited to get going on the improvements and.
Okay. Alright, well, I guess that's the best we can um
Yes.
we can go for now.
Yeah, definitely some movement on this one.
Okay, thank you. Um I do have a question about, because we've been asked about the duck pond. Where are we with that?
Uh.
I know that we were going out to bid.
Yeah.
A second time.
We're still, so we've not been happy with uh with tectonic. So they've got two projects that have been kinda slow to respond to, and this is one. So they prepared the uh revised bid specs. They submitted them to Jeff, he reviewed them, he gave his comments back to them. We're now waiting their final um spec, so Jeff is away this week, so I don't have an update on when he expects that or if he may have received it in the interim.
How long ago did they have it, got it?
Uh it's been this summer that they've got it back to us, so within the last couple of weeks.
Okay, I I know the neighbors are, you know, they're very anxious to have their bridge back, which I totally understand.
The the project. I agree.
And um you know, we're doing our best to to get this done. Sometimes you know, you don't get responsive bids and that's what happens the first time and you cannot help that, it happens. So we're clarifying it to hopefully avoid the same thing happening again, but um.
Yeah, I and Jeff, I will say, has been pretty proactive as in to pushing uh the engineering firm to
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
to move this forward, so.
Okay, so we just need their final um feedback from the latest.
Yeah. And then we we should be able to go out to bid.
Okay, alright. I I mean, I just want people to know that we are
Yes.
moving along.
Yeah, we definitely did. It it's not forgotten.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, that's it uh for the work session? Right?
Yep, yep.
Was that, okay, so uh they have a motion to adjourn the work session and enter into the town board meeting.
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any announcements, Rob?
I don't have any announcements.
Okay, um it's gonna be a very short and sweet meeting. Um my supervisor's report is I will hold that until the newsletter for this week. Um anything to report, any?
I do, I have a couple of things for the administrators' report just to uh update the board and the public.
Anything? Mm.
So um wanna update everybody on what's going on with the award of the contract for the design and inspection of the chap line. So um we have uh we're in the middle of that process, we received four responses to the uh RFQ that we issued. Um our committee reviewed each response and uh they scored them in six different categories. Um we ended up taking the top two scoring uh firms and we interviewed them, we had a personal interview with them. Uh we ended up with a top choice. Um we actually just received the contract today, which wasn't in time to review it or approve it for this meeting. So um we had discussed another date, did we confirm?
Right, I had I had looked forward to discussing it at length at this meeting, but
Yeah.
but you know, we wanted to be very thorough and give them the chance to, you know, present a complete picture
Yeah.
of of their services, so we will do that. Um I would like to add a meeting, which would be on the twenty sixth.
Okay.
Um so that we can approve that contract because we'd like to get going on the project.
Yes.
Um I know that there would be some time constraints regarding approvals and so we don't wanna be caught um sort of flat footed and have to wait
Yeah.
a whole year for certain cycles to go through, so um hopefully we can get three members of the board together.
I'll be I'll be available, Chris and.
Um so that that is not a a scheduled meeting, so we will just handle that item. It'll be very short and whatever else, whatever other business of the town board
Yeah, they may we
means to be means to be approved.
May put on some admin items, but we probably wouldn't have any other discussion items at that meeting.
Right. Okay.
Five thirty, do we plan it to five thirty?
So um I don't know if we would have an exact, but we would let's say five thirty in case there is something to be discussed about.
Yeah, I mean, we s- staff um you know, currently believes there's no meeting between now and September ninth, so I don't know
Right.
that they really have any business or looking to transact. It's not to say something couldn't come up, but I think we could probably say no.
Right, well, since since we usually gather at five thirty, let's make it at five thirty and it could be very, you know, early night or.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, great.
Uh just a couple other items.
So we'll put out, we we need to put out notice for that meeting.
Yes, yeah, Lauren, can you make sure that Chris?
Yeah, we noticed that.
Thank you.
Um just wanted to update everyone on the Gedney Park uh pond treatment. So the contractor Little Bear was out there to apply the second treatment on last Tuesday. Um the pond, uh Dennis has been out there and Ike's been out there. Pond is showing some pretty significant improvement at this point.
It looks good.
Yeah, um so they're uncertain whether there'll need to be another treatment, so they're going to monitor that and and make that determination uh over the next couple of weeks. Uh and we're preparing for the uh in the late fall where we do the hydro rate and um and pull that material out of the pond. Um couple things that just came in today, uh so Seven Bridges Road Paving. So uh actually, one of our residents let us know, we we hadn't heard from Westchester County. Uh they were installing some curbing over the last couple of weeks on Seven Bridges Road and we reached out to the uh county DOT and they let us know it's actually part of a bigger project. So um we found out today the curbing has been completed. Uh they then expect to begin milling and paving on August twenty first. Uh they plan to continue that through August twenty sixth. During that work, one lane will remain open during the project and uh Newcastle Police will be on site for traffic control. And once the paving is complete, they'll begin to install new guide rail too. Uh another project around town, not town project, but uh outside. Con Edison is doing some work or will begin doing some work tomorrow on one seventeen near the Whipper Will area. Uh work is expected to begin tomorrow, the thirteenth, and to continue through August twenty ninth. They also plan to keep one lane open during this project and they will also be using Newcastle Police to provide traffic.
Do you know what they're doing?
We believe gas line. That's what Bart said today.
Okay.
It's a great level of communication.
That's a crazy, I mean, that's that is a significant project for them not to tell us.
Yeah, and in fact, that I got from the lieutenant because they requested police officers there.
Um okay, and that's a state.
That Con Ed uh I mean, that's a state road, yeah.
I mean, Con Ed, yeah.
Remind me, they they pay overtime?
Yes.
I'm just think, I mean, these are two significant projects, different different agencies that have not informed. I guess this must be typical, but is there a way to to contact them and
Yes.
encourage better communication?
We have an annual meeting with Con Ed. Um it's surprising, they they typically give us a heads up when they're working in town. I think last year or the year before they were out for the months of like July and August out on Campfire and Hardscrabble, doing a lot of work. We have plenty of advance notice for that. Um I'm not quite sure, we don't just literally came across it, I don't know, what about three o'clock this afternoon or so?
Right, right.
Um then we looked at the date, said you're starting tomorrow.
Okay, so you'll put all this in the admin admin status report, so people can read the newsletter and be aware?
Yes, this will go. Yeah. Yeah, I'll after this meeting, I'll forward this uh little write-up that I have to carry and include in the newsletter.
Thank you, okay. Great, okay.
That's all I have for that.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um okay, now we're up to public comment and new business. Anyone um with a public comment? Please come up to the microphone, identify yourself and uh where you live.
Laura Linehan, longtime Newcastle resident. Um I'm speaking this evening concerning the use by the town of Newcastle of secondary generation anticoagulant rodenticides. SGARs, which I hope will be discontinued. Our magnificent raptors, owls, hawks and eagles are rodent predators. They are a natural balance for rat populations. But eating rats can kill these raptors if the rats have eaten second generation anticoagulant rat poisons from bait boxes. These rodenticides were banned from retail sale by the federal government in twenty fifteen due to dangers posed to children, pets and wildlife, but they remain legal and widely used by commercial pest control companies in Westchester County and elsewhere, including on properties owned by the town of Newcastle. These rodenticides cause internal bleeding. Raptors that eat these poisoned rodents can also experience internal bleeding causing death. A national study of three hundred and three dead bald eagles found that eighty-two percent had been exposed to rodenticides. And a study at a Massachusetts wildlife clinic found that one hundred percent of red-tailed hawks tested there had these rodenticides in their bodies. I did a small survey in Newcastle of public spaces and exteriors of public buildings. The library, the high school, parking lots behind commercial buildings, the recycling center. And these bait traps were easily found. For example, I saw five just walking the perimeter of the high school building, three at the library, seven in public, meaning town, parking lots and at the recycling center. These locations, even those at large trash receptacles, did not have trash on the ground that would attract rodents. For example, for those of you who drop off your food scraps, you know that um the area around the food scrap bins are pr- is pristine. You don't see anything on the ground. It's possible to control rodent populations without the use of these second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. Briefly, keep areas free of trash. Close off access holes to buildings. Use snap traps or carbon dioxide traps. Parenthetically, glue traps which are used by the town are inhumane as they do not cause sudden death of the rodent.
What's a carbon dioxide, what's a carbon dioxide trap?
I don't know the details of that, but the animal enters the trap and carbon dioxide is released and it must be sealed somehow so that um the carbon dioxide replaces the oxygen. How did that sound?
It's not even professional.
Um you can also use rodent contraceptives. And finally, you can put up raptor boxes where they can nest and hunt rodents to feed their young. A single family of barn owls can eat one thousand to three thousand rodents a year. I've been in contact with Mr. Bart Carey, the Commissioner of Public Works about the town's efforts to control rodents, in particular the use of these rodenticides. And he's been most informative, but we haven't discussed discontinuation. I'm working with the advocacy committee of the Sawmill River Audubon to get out the word to Westchester towns and our state representatives about the hazards of these rodenticides. I hope that our town will be a leader by discontinuing the use of these second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides. They're classified as pesticides which, under state law, the town is authorized to regulate. So I'm requesting authorization to work with Mr. Carey on efforts to eliminate the use of these rodenticides. I'm sure that the Sawmill River um Audubon will want to participate and perhaps the Newcastle Conservation Board as well.
Thank you very much, Laura. I I care very much about these birds myself personally. And um I I would like to see what else we can do, you know, to ensure that we have effective but better better treatments. Um I don't think you need our authorization. I you know, we're not going to deputize private residents to work with our staff, but Bart is certainly free to to gather information and you can give it to him. Um you know, all I can say is that we will definitely look into this. Um I'm curious, you entered school district property and went around the high school?
Um I did it on a Sunday when people were
I suppose that's allowed, yeah.
people were on the playing fields and things like that. I I I thought it might attract attention. I drove up to the school and I just I just walked around the perimeter.
Right, right.
Um and I was prepared to um speak if uh you know, member of security or the police force came and asked me what I was doing there. I mean, there are a lot of people who go into school property for a variety of reasons.
Now school property is not a, you know, that's not a marginal distinction, so.
I know that, and the library, the library is not as well.
It's not either, right?
It's just an example of how widespread the use is.
CCSD property, yeah. Yeah, um.
I welcome that information and anything educational on this topic, so thank you very much for taking the time to share this with us.
A a couple of um comments. Um I I know, you know, I don't really need official authorization, but I'd like to be able to say to Mr. Carey that I've discussed this with the board and that you know about it and that you
Yeah, I I will talk to him as well and, yeah.
agree with proceeding. The the other thing is that um he told me that at the um Performing Arts Center, they are going to put out what are called monitoring traps. So these don't consent contain rodenticide, so they're able to estimate how much um activity there is. Um but they, he, there there are three companies that the town contracts to do um a variety of types of pest control, I guess. And one of the companies had, I asked for reports and he gave me the reports. One was very, very detailed. Every single site, what percent of the rodenticide had been consumed, so sort of what sort of activity they 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 were um seeing. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't use other mechanisms for control, but the report also made recommendations like you have areas where you need to block off access to buildings and thi- things like that. And I did ask him, because the areas are so pristine that I looked at, I'll give you one exception, which is not on town property. Um I said, do you do it just in case or do you do it because there's actually evidence of rodent activity? And he said it's based on evidence of rodent activity. Um so um I'm gonna forget what the other comment was that I wanted to make about this, but um in in any case, it it would be a staged thing, the town could discontinue, but then it would have to be up to individual businesses and the library and 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 the school. The the state of Massachusetts has just passed a statewide ban. They have lots of Audubon societies, very active, and um just within the past month that occurred. And there is um legislation before um the New York State uh Senate and um is it called the Assembly?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um and the Environmental Law Center at Pace is working on the wording. They're not satisfied that this is strong enough legislation, so. Um it's possible that um it will, your your potential action would be preempted if the state passed this, but you know better than I that it's um it's a process to get the state legislature to pass something and then the the governor to sign it, so.
Okay, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Um Rob, we can, you know, we will look into it on what's done.
Very much.
So I'll note, and I've uh Bart had shared some of the information and copied, I'm not sure, copied, but he shared
Yeah, yeah.
you know, your correspondence with him and and some of his responses, so I do know the bait you know, the the one company that has provides a good amount of information on their reports. You you do see how much bait they're leaving, which is indicative that there are, you know, rodents eating the bait, so you know, there's a need, so you uh Bart mentioned that um they're starting, a- as you mentioned, the non-toxic bait box that they're gonna attempt to use at the chap pack and they're gonna kind of monitor that. And if they see that they have good results with that, Bart said he's open to expanding that program. Um in his opinion, we're not ready yet to totally eliminate rodenticides, but he does say that they're working towards uh reducing them for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I I dressed for the occasion.
Ah yes, I know, I can see that and I like the shirt and uh
Need a turnaround, so.
Just uh let us know where you got it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh my name is RJ Bastardo, live at two Danny Lane in Chappaquaun. Um I'm a volunteer at the Take It or Leave It shop, and I wanted sincerely thank the the board for continued support, Take It or Leave It. Um I like to call it the happiest place in Chappaquaun. The people who are dropping off their lightly-used goods is ecstatic to get it out of the house. And then those people who are attending to shop, as it were, you know, in the spring, uh they're ecstatic to get items uh at no cost. Um so I greatly appreciate um on behalf of the Take It or Leave It, uh very quick um uh story. Maybe three weeks ago, it was on a Saturday, I was at Take It or Leave It and I turned around, I was working and there Jill Shapiro was. Which she's not a regular attendee and Jay was there, was very nice, said hello. Mm they left maybe an hour later, I was working, turned around and Rob Green seems there. So at like nine forty in the morning, I text Rob, I said, what is it? Is it old timers that give the Take It or Leave It? So uh he left, so um but thank you again.
Did anyone take them or someone leaving them?
Someone, yeah, I was only thinking he beat me to it.
It's funny because um um Jill was there to leave off Jenny.
Oh.
Was this recorded, sorry?
And maybe Rob was picking him up.
Good. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I think they played, they played tennis together actually, so so maybe there was a drop off and picked up there, yeah.
It is.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Th- thank you, RJ. It's a great um it's a great service. I we all really appreciate all the volunteers because it's a volunteer um effort and uh it's great to know of the really happy places in town, so that's one of them. And thank you so much. Um.
A a brief other comment, Laura Linehan, longtime resident.
Yeah.
Um the Sawmill River Audubon is sponsoring um an evening event on October ninth at the library about this this topic. Um the 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 rodenticide, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
October ninth.
October ninth. Uh is there anyone online for public comment? Okay, no one is online, so we'll close the public comment period. And um we're up to our consent agenda. Have we decided that we can skip going over all the items of the consent agenda because we just did it at the work session? Although we are at a set different point of the meeting, but I think we just
I think we, yeah, yeah.
we did get the okay from uh Lino the last time, so we can uh reconspare ourselves doing the the big repeat.
That was
That was part of that was part of the notice too, right?
Yeah.
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 Right.
Uh the only
Is there anything that we wanna add?
Yeah, the only thing we note, um it was discussed on the administrative items, but not listed on the consent agenda was the um banner request for historical society. So we'd like to add that to the consent agenda.
Alright, so then I moved to adopt, I mean, one two twenty one is listed on the consent agenda as well as the banner request for the historical society.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh I moved to okay? I moved to retroactively approve payment of claims in the amount of six hundred eleven thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars eighty-four cents listed on the summary AP check registered detailed voucher detail report. Both dated July eighteen twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, July eighteenth of this glorious year.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I do one more?
One more, yeah.
I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claim in the amount of uh six hundred thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars thirty-four cents listed on the summary AP check registered registered, pardon me, and detailed voucher detail report. Both dated July twenty fifth twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, July twenty fifth twenty twenty five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Jen.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred seventy-eight thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents listed on the summary AP check register and detailed voucher detail report. Both dated August first twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, August first twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the change in start date for the following individuals who served as twenty twenty five camp staff directors, assistant directors and thereby authorized the retroactive payment from March thirty-first twenty twenty five to June thirtieth twenty twenty five. See below.
Uh second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move to approve the letter of agreement for an independent contractor business plan development for a Chappaquaun Performing Arts Center between the town of Newcastle and Rachel Zemansky for a term commencing September first twenty twenty five through October thirty-first twenty twenty five for a fixed fee of ten thousand dollars payable upon deliverables.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Rachel.
Yay, welcome.
Welcome.
I move to adopt the following resolution, be it resolved at the resolution dated twen- July twenty-second twenty twenty five terminating the probationary period of employee three one seven two effective July thirty-first twenty twenty five is hereby amended to read as follows. Pursuant to New York Civil Service law and the Westchester County Department of Human Resources upon recommendation of the chief police, the probationary period of employee three one seven two is hereby terminated effective August twenty-second twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the appointment of Sally Foster as a member of the LGBTQ plus committee for a term of two years effective August thirteen twenty twenty five through August thirty-first twenty twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Sally Foster. Um okay, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.